Okay, pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, and the governor's March 15th orders imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Due to the outbreak of the coronavirus, this meeting of the town of Berlin select board will be conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. And every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. The town of Berlin will use best efforts to post an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. On the town's webpage, the town's YouTube channel and approved minutes will be posted to mytowngovernment.org. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to attend the virtual meeting may attend via the Zoom webinar platform in one of two ways. With both audio and video access or by telephone audio only. Should any board member have technical difficulties and or lose access to the meeting, the meeting will recess for a period of time to see whether access can be restored. If not, the meeting will be continued to another date agreed to by a majority of the board or adjourned until our next scheduled meeting. Call the meeting to order at 7:03. The first thing on the agenda is the September 21st, 21st open session meeting minutes. We, I assume you've both read them.
Yep.
Can I have?
I like, I like those pictures with it. I think more minutes should have pictures with them.
Wow.
I move approving of the open meeting, open session minutes from the 21st.
And I'm only going to approve if we have pictures of Scott eating his donuts.
So on the agenda, it only says the 21st, but there's two sets of meeting minutes. It's the noon and the seven.
Right, right. The one, the trip to the Bullard House. So both, are you making a motion to approve both, Scott?
I am, yes.
Okay.
And I will second both.
Okay. And any comments or questions? All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote. Keith, I.
Stone, I.
Hawkins, I.
Okay, motion passes. We did have a piece of correspondence from the town clerk. Her request to use the entire lower level of the town office building for Tuesday, November 3rd for the election. Is there, is there any issues with, with that, Margaret, or can they be solved?
The issues with that can all be solved and they're solved through advance notice to the people that occupy the downstairs, the, the lower level of the building. So Council on Aging has received notice and the food pantry has received notice. So they have received their advance notice.
Okay.
Quite understandable that the town clerk needs the entire lower level.
Yeah.
Does, do we know for how we're doing on ballot counters for the third? I've, I've heard some scuttlebutt that there's still a request for, for volunteers to help us count ballots on the third.
I have not. I spoke with Eloise earlier today and she did not present any additional requests for ballot counters, but she, I know she's lining up more people.
Okay.
So if you know of anybody who's interested, have them get in touch with Eloise and she can guide them.
Okay, so shall we make a, shall we make a motion to approve the town clerk's use of the lower level for the election?
So moved.
And seconded.
Okay, let's take a vote. Keith, I.
Stone, I.
Hawkins, I.
Okay, and that motion passes. Do we have any general public comment at this time? I see no hands raised. So I will move on. We have a 7:05 appointment with our department head, Fire Chief Ken Clark. Hi, Chief.
I don't think I see him here yet.
Oh, he's right there.
That's about the point. For me, he's, he's like down two people.
And I got, and I got him like right there.
He's in the lower right corner of mine. Okay, Chief, you're there.
Bingo.
Wow, I don't have him on my screen.
No, we see him.
That's good.
Can you see, can you hear us, Chief?
Oh, there he is.
He might not be hearing us because I can see him fine. But now he's turned off the video.
Oh, because he's the host. How did that happen? All right.
Let's see if I can. Chief, you, I don't know if you can hear me, but you're welcome to come up to my office if you'd like, or I can run down there and see if I, whoops, he's gone again.
Wow, Margaret, you scared him away.
And it implies that his computer does not have a microphone.
Yeah, yeah, right. But then again, I don't see it. Oh yeah, he's got the camera.
Yeah, I see the camera. He's connected by the cloud. He is a host.
Wow, how did he do that?
Let me, um, let me ask him to come on up. Chief, would, if you, Chief, can you hear me? Can you hear us? Okay, I'll text him and tell him to come up.
Well, it looks like he's like. Yeah.
By this time next year, we'll have this all figured out.
Yeah. Well, let's hope we're not still doing this next year. Any of this.
I don't know. I think I'm beginning to like Zoom meetings.
Oh my gosh.
I think our attendance at Zoom meetings is higher than our attendance at meetings of the select board.
I am going to, I am going.
I got him.
Oh, here he comes. Okay, he's coming up. I'll turn my, I'll turn my monitor so that he can present to you as soon as he's here. I put my mask on. Oh, good. Everyone gets a chance to see how we live here day to day. Chief will be coming in in a second, I'm sure.
So we have to zoom in and see if there's anything on that dry erase board that we should be.
I know, I'm looking. I can just see what's up there. If he left anything confidential up on his wall.
Oh, his wall. I was like, by Margaret. This is kind of boring.
Oh, Margaret, hers never changes. I'm going to go in and write like biped notices.
You go ahead, sit down. I'll, I'll pivot this so you can. All right, Chief is. Here we are.
Oh, there he is.
Okay, let me.
Yeah, we had some technical difficulties with that little tablet that I share. Chief Galvin lets me borrow to do that, so.
All right, Chief. So how's, how's things going?
Going very well. How are you? How's everybody doing tonight?
Good.
Good, good. Want me to just jump right in?
Go for it.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I just need my glasses for this. The Fire Department Activity Report for August of 2020. We had one significant structure fire that was caught. You couldn't ask for better timing. The story associated with it is it was a really, really narrow driveway, long driveway. And it was challenging to get the truck in. And we used the two and a half gallon water can. The fire was just starting to evolve away from the kitchen cabinets out of, came out of a microwave. It was coming across the kitchen ceiling. And it was one of those things that's not your A plant ever because it's not the safest way. But I told them, no, uh, no heroes and use the can. They used the extinguisher can to knock it down and put it back. And it was like, uh, and just as that happened, the truck was in the driveway and we had a hose line which never was used because the can did such a good job. So it was, it was like, sometimes you just get the luck of the draw and we got it that morning. It was a Monday morning up on, up off of Linden Street. So it was like, I'll take those when you get them because you don't often get them like that. But we had, after that, that month, we had a 21 fire responses in, uh, in August, which was pretty good. 28 EMS responses. There was four motor vehicle accidents that required transport. And there was public service, a range of different type of calls to the community was 32. And one interesting thing that I noted, even with the COVID slowdown this year, our total so as of this morning were 612 calls to date. Like for calendar year 2020, and in 2019, which everyone thought was kind of busy, in the full year, there were 681. So things have been a lot busier and it's like, uh, we're up to almost three calls per day. It's just shy of three calls per day. So it's like, been like interesting. There's been, the highway's been extremely busy. They're out there again Saturday morning for a TT unit in a car tangled up just northbound, just prior to 62. The guys did a fantastic job, transported both ambulances we used to transport the occupants of the vehicles to a local hospital. And it went really good. So it's like, uh, I like that. I was listening to it from home. I didn't physically move on it, but I went out to the car and listened on the radio. They were in really good shape. The command structure was strong. The radio communications were clear and concise. And I felt really, and it made me smile. I felt comfortable with not being there in, uh, in the, in the personnel did a really fantastic job. So I was very happy and very proud of the way they worked out there. Excuse me. And the other thing I want to talk to about is, uh, one of the things that I have done for the town of Berlin since I've been here is the Emergency Management Director. And currently Berlin has a, what they call a local emergency planning committee or LEPC model. And, uh, and I do a lot of work in conversation with NEMA on a bunch of different topics I have for years since I've been involved with them with the marathon for so many years that a lot of those contacts are still there. And, uh, and they're trying to push like, not push, but get communities to go into what they call a regional emergency planning committee, which would take three, four, or five towns together. And I just kind of like want to bring that, like, that model, kind of explain a little, ask any questions that you may have on it. Because what it does, it pools resources for multiple towns. Instead of us having to have to do everything and be ready for everything. We have to have a very high state of readiness on our own, but we work together monthly at training in, in meetings to bring resources. If I had something I could bring, again, I'm just going to pick some towns and none of them have been formally asked, so I'm not saying that they're going to be in it. But some Bolton resources or whoever was going to be available or be as part of that regional emergency plan, planning committee, the REPC. And you share resources. And if you, if one town has something that's serious and the other towns are quiet, then the resources would come to help the town that needs the resources. So there's a lot of really positive aspects to it. I got, I was very, very involved in the, in the early stages in the development of our REPC with the communities where I came from, Hockington, Ashland, Framingham, Natick, Paulson, and Sherwin. And the concept worked really, really well with those big communities. Sometimes there's turf there when you get into the big communities, oh, we can do this on our own, we can do that on our own. But it worked really well because the people who were there wanted to have it done. And that's where you find out. You ask the people who are going to be doing it. If they don't want to do it, want to be on their own, that's fine. There's no hard feelings. They can do that. But it's a concept that needs to be, that could be investigated and I could report back to you at a later date if that's something that's feasible. And I still have a lot of responsibility on my own to be, to have the local one ready. We have to be ready if we have some emergencies. This just allows us to, it's like a shared resource type thing with other communities. You still have, you're still going to do 95% of the work on your own for your own community, but it's shared with all the other communities that are involved, whoever wants to be when you're forming up. There's also some larger grants that you get from NEMA that are available when you do that, that becomes available from them to like be able to consolidate these resources. I don't know if that brings any questions to the forefront or I'm kind of like, just kind of like looking for like maybe a little bit of a blessing to kind of go and check that and see who's available, who wants to do it. And before I made any moves or commitments for the town of Berlin, I would take it back to, through Margaret to your committee so that we were all on the same page. And it's not something to be, I take my emergency management position very, very serious and it's not something you do easily, but it's a, it's, I think that would be, I wouldn't be bringing it to your attention. I didn't think it was good for the town of Berlin. So it's like, uh, that's kind of it in a nutshell. Any questions you may have, like I said, I've got quite a bit of experience with it. I could try to answer them. If I didn't have the answers, I would certainly get back to, to you as the, as the governing board in, uh, as we move forward.
Chief, is this something that would be in addition to ALS or in place of ALS or?
This is completely different than ALS. Chris, this is just emergency management. So it's like, it's things like they get involved with the police to fire. The Board of Health get involved, the, the DPWs get involved. So all those, all those, and I know there's a regional one here for the Board of Health, so it's, that's easy because there's only probably one contact there like for, at the Nushova, and then someone from each town. But I saw it come together really good. Where I came from with a lot, with some really large community, I think at the time, it was before Framingham was a city, but they still had 60,000, 70,000 people as just one of them. So it was like, and it just, the gears just came together so smoothly to say, oh, if we can do that with all those people, had all their own like little things that we can certainly with some smaller communities, get this done and have a really positive effect for all the communities that are involved. But again, I haven't reached out to anybody. I had a brief conversation with the Bolton Fire Chief, just to kind of like pick his brain a little bit. He said he would definitely be interested in listening to see where it would go. But it's as far as I've gone with it, just kind of like, I was in a conversation on the ALS with him and just brought that up and just to kind of see where he would be. And he thought it was very positive, but again, we're at that, we're at that light, right out of that, we're not even crawling at stage. So it's like, uh, I just wanted to run that by you, see what your thoughts and ideas were on it. If you thought that was good or you're going to tell me can, you don't want to be involved with that, don't even waste a second on it. Then I go there, you know what I mean? It's what, I kind of have to have like, uh, a little bit of a green light from you guys to bring you back more information to see where you want to go and how you want to do it. And go from there.
How do you feel, Peg and Scott?
You know what? Any chance to collaborate with another town on what they're doing, what they're doing? Well, why not? Yeah, it's, it's a discussion. It's a melding of the minds. I'm fine.
Right. I also see it as, but I, I like it too because I think it also has a potential for some, money saving is not quite the right word, but like, you know, there are some pieces of equipment for an emergency that you might, you need once every five years and five towns might need it once a year. So if we have one of those pieces and some other town is a second, a different sort of thing, we could all have what we need nearby. And as a town, we've loved collaborations. We have the, the Board of Health collaboration. We already have the 911 collaboration. I think this just follows along the same vein. And again, devils in details, but as a concept, it's definitely worth exploring.
Yeah.
I just wanted to add that this is definite, I, I've, I've been fortunate enough to participate in these before. And it's definitely an opportunity to help the small towns build capacity. So each town can benefit through building the capacity. So as Scott mentioned, sharing equipment, but also bolstering staff resources, maybe even training resources and things like that. So I think this is a, the idea is a win-win.
Right. Some trainers for the day or, you know, 500 bucks for the day, whether or not you have three people there or 12 people there. And so if you can split it between a couple of towns, better for all of us.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Well, there goes Chris. She's frozen again.
Is there anything else? Or does anyone else have any other questions?
I have one. Well, you were. So Chief, on your report, it said about the grant utilized to enhance the EOC capability. What is EOC short for?
Emergency Operations Center kind of ties into like the emergency management. It's, it seems in my experience here, there's like a loose EOC down in the training room. But in, in the time of a severe weather event, something really bad, you could all together, your EOC committee and you identify that, that's part of getting this functional. Okay. And we wanted to spend that, the grant money on some technology for it. There's like one of those, uh, Chief Galvin had a really good idea, like a conference call telephone thing and a couple of screens that we could tie into. And I was actually at Best Buy today, pricing screens. And the gentleman told me about an app that you got that we can actually send it from phone to phone. And then if someone was in the EOC, say we had, I'm going to go with a severe weather event in some really bad areas around town that wires were down, streets were blocked. And National Grid are similar to what I was used to dealing with EverSource because they ask you for it to triage and give them three priorities for the town of Berlin for the day. I'm just picking a number. Sometimes it's five, depending on how much, how widespread it is. And so that would allow us to send personnel out onto the street with a smartphone, send the pictures back in and we'd be able to instantly put those pictures up on the screens to see what the damage is and that, those people who are making the decisions, doing the triage and doing the priority setting in the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center to like, call National Grid, their hotline into their, their EOC and say, okay, Berlin's going to do the Five Corners intersection today. Linden at Central and whatever you're going to do to clean those up. Say those are our three priorities. And they would put their resources on that for the day. And it's a very good, really good system. And it's like, uh, and it gives you just like, there's not much technology available down there now. We just kind of like build it out. And I was very blessed for many years due to the marathon to go to that NEMA EOC down in Framingham. And what, you don't reinvent the wheel. You kind of steal some of their good stuff on a much, much smaller scale and do it locally. So it's like, uh, you know, you got to have some capability and hopefully a representative or your board would be there if we had to make these decisions. And it's like a team effort and it's like, uh, invite them in when it's functional. We can invite people in, we can invite, have the whole town come in on a day just to see how it works and walk through, look at it and out the other door. And there's a lot of capability that you have there. And again, that's mainly for the town of Berlin, that is, and any resources. We built actually, uh, we built out an incident action plan back when the COVID started. If we had to for the 135, our Pleasant Street. We built out a whole incident action plan that we would have run out of your office up here on the second floor. And it's like, uh, and it would have acted like a mini EOC or in, uh, we would have remote incident commanders. The, the chief and I would have been there along with Margaret and one of your delegates there. And then we would have been able to like have operations at the scene and you just kind of run it from, uh, uh, like a fire a little bit, you know what I mean? So it's like, uh, it's run remotely and letting people do the job down there. We would just be making the strategic decisions here. They make the tactical decisions on the, on the street at the site. So it's like, uh, I got that plan. So every day when you have time stopping, it's still on the, my small desk in the office there. Because the COVID hasn't gone away yet. So we still get it right there. And it's interesting to look at. I can explain it to you in two minutes. So it's like, but that EMPG grant was $2,700. And that's like one of the things like the TVs and the wall hangers and things like that and the, uh, that you, that you make that commitment to and, and, and spend that on something like that. The technology is, is kind of lacking down that realm. So this would be a way to enhance it.
And see, and that brings me, I mean, everyone knows that I like to steal stuff from other towns. Borrow, borrow. So I would love, so I would love to start promoting stuff. I mean, because here in the community advocate, you know, it's, well, you can't see it. It's backward. You know, what's it said? Sure's Breach Fire Department. Yeah, it takes delivery of new fire engines. So like, there's a nice little write-up. So I would love, you know, for Berlin to start doing the same on things that we do and see if we can drag, you know, the item in just to get information out. Because this is great. We see all this and unless people are watching this or watch the playback, they have no idea what's going on. So, but what a great opportunity to be like, hey, look, we've got your best interest in heart and here's how we're doing to prepare just in case XYZ happens. This is what we can do. So, you know, Margaret, Chris, Scott, you know, maybe this is, uh, you know, Mary, this is something that we can start to look at is how do we get more word out to the town of what we do?
Well, I think that the REPC is very similar to the ALS. Once you get some meat to it, to the bones, and the, and the ALS has got more meat on the bone already. But then you start bringing this to the community and letting them know what you do. It's kind of like, you know, it's a little bit different, but it's like the Johnny Galato. You know what I mean? It's like, there's someone that did a fantastic thing to bring positive to the town of Berlin and the Berlin Fire Department. And he had 19,900 likes on his phone from there. So it's like, he killed it, you know what I mean? And here's, there's a good, like a, he's still blushing about it. We got a picture down there that you can, you can get a picture for 15. If you sign, you signed it, you got to pay 20 for it. We're just busting it all day, you know? So it's like, uh, yeah, so.
You know, I mean, but this helps draw people to town. You know, Chief, it helps you as people retire, as people leave, as they move from like shift to shift to say, you know what? Look at what Berlin's doing for their town. They're really taking care of it. They're gung ho. They're able to do XYZ. That's a place where I want to work. You know, that's a place where I want to live. So I'm all about trying to promote the town and all the goodness, you know, that we, that we do, that each department does. So, you know, something for us to think.
I'm like a huge proponent of the community engagement. So it's like you've done it for years and it's like, I think it's important that, that you keep the community in the loop. And I know what you're doing. And it's like all the way down to the Code Red, which, uh, Chief Galvin, he supervises that. And we did a sign up for that. I don't know how many we got. Oh, we tried that. And then, and then the house numbers thing, little things like that, that CPR, all those like little community things, all add up to make it better, you know?
Yeah, no, I totally agree.
Chief, I think you've got our blessing at this point. I don't want to cut you short, but we do have two other presentations. We're running a little bit late.
No, I apologize. I had technical difficulty with that little thing down here. And Margaret was nice enough to invite me up to use her.
Oh, no problem. Now you need to go back, you need to go back downstairs and turn it off.
Yes.
Yeah, we just have the, yeah, the logo.
Oh, it's not there.
Okay, I'll do that. I just.
You might want to just, just, just leave it for the balance of the meeting and kill the mic because I think somehow or another he's the host. So I'm not sure how that happened. You can just leave it alone. Your mic's already dead down there and the camera's dead. So you're good.
Yeah, just leave it alone.
Awesome.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Chief. Have a good one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
I like Margaret.
I was just looking out the window. All right, our next presentation is with Chris and Matt Sonny regarding their new proposed townhouse development in the River Bridge Village District. Who is, is Chris going to speak? Matt, are you going to speak?
They're both on mute.
Oh, well, somebody needs to go off.
Chris is off. Chris is off mute.
Okay.
Well, hi, I'm here.
Hi, Chris.
Hi, sorry about that. Thank you very much for having us at your meeting tonight. Matt and I wanted to have a chance to give the board an update on how we've been doing and some of our plans going forward. Like, like it has been for everyone, this spring and summer was very difficult with the, with the COVID-19 crisis. Our hotel dropped from 65% occupancy down to the twenties. And it's slowly creeping back up. It's back up in the high thirties now. It won't really pick all the way back up until business travel picks up and that's maybe going to be a while. But we worked with our bank, Eastern Bank, and got some deferral on some of the mortgage payments. And we've been able to keep the hotel open and, and manage through this. And we hope business travel can open up again soon, if it's safe to do so. And we hope to see those numbers creep back up. The daycare center was closed for a number of months, but by law, it had to close. It is now open again with reduced staff and reduced students. During the months it was closed, we gave a concession of about half of their normal rent. And now they have resumed paying the full rent. The gas station stayed open, but we saw their numbers go down and they paid us full rent throughout the, the crisis. And Matt's Cafe has been, has, has struggled like every other business. The liquor store was open more than the cafe. Both are now open again and are, the numbers are starting to, to climb back up. I think the hardest part of it for us is our not-for-profit water district called the River Bridge Association, Inc., which is a collection of all the owners of property at River Bridge. So it's now managed by the hotel and the apartments and, and Matt and myself. We had projected reaching certain quantities of water sales that fell way off because of COVID. And so we lost considerable money at the, at the water district. And each of the three main owners kicked in a special assessment. And each of the three main owners kicked in a special assessment to keep T R A uh, in enough funds to manage the public water supply and the wastewater treatment plant. Um, and the numbers are starting to pick back up because the apartment rentals are growing. Uh, that also fell way behind during the crisis, uh, but it's picked back up. And today there are sixty-eight of two hundred and four apartments with occupants. And I believe to date, there may have only been two or three school enrollments coming out of those occupied apartments. If that's the case, then the school enrollment, uh, is likely to be less or the school impact is likely to be less than we projected. Uh, the apartments are hoping to have, uh, one hundred and twenty-five of the apartments occupied by the end of the year. That's their current projection. So it's been a rough time. We also worked with the banks that have the mortgages, um, at the cafe and the gas station. And they were all very good to us. The, the banks from our, our community that are supporting businesses. Three, three banks deferred either all principal and interest or just principal. And it really helped us survive. We did, we did secure, uh, some PPP loans, which have been very helpful. And those should be forgiven because we use those for, for employees. So we're here. It's been rough, but it's been rough for the town and for everyone else in town to, to manage through this. Uh, we also wanted to bring to your attention that with the planning board and perhaps with your knowledge, a new updated fiscal impact analysis of River Bridge is in the works. With the same company that did the original study in two thousand nine and did an update in two thousand thirteen, uh, Community Opportunities Group, Inc. And a woman by the name of Roberta Cameron has finished phase one of a new fiscal impact analysis. And by this fall and winter, she should have two other phases completed. We pay for that, but, but the town commissioned it. And we have nothing, no ability to influence that. We, we just put the funds in an account and, and we cover the cost of that updated study. The reason we wanted to do that, or we suggested it, is that we think the, the total fiscal impact on the town of Berlin from our mixed-use village is going to be more positive and more favorable than we originally anticipated. One reason is the value of the buildings that we've built is higher than we anticipated. The hotel is over a twenty million dollar installation and the apartments is a forty-five million dollar undertaking. And these are values that eventually will, uh, translate into higher real estate taxes going forward. And we thought it would be a good time to have a new fiscal impact analysis done to see just where do we think River Bridge and the town will come out in the aggregate once everything stabilizes. The timing of that study is probably going to correspond pretty well with a late fall or winter town meeting. We don't know exactly when that town meeting will take place, but we're considering, beginning to discuss with various boards, a set of warrant articles for that town meeting, which are really designed to kind of bring the development phase of River Bridge to a close. Matt and I have been at this eleven years. This has not been a speedy undertaking, but we've stayed at it and worked it every day since then, especially my brother. I mean, I'm down on the Cape now. But Matt works River Bridge every single day, uh, to try to, to try to solve problems that come up and, and get us to the finish line. So we're anticipating maybe sponsoring some warrant articles this fall or winter. Some of them would be zoning articles. Some of them would be articles to suggest amendments to the development agreement. Perhaps the most dramatic piece has to do with the, the last remaining developable parcel at River Bridge. That's the parcel between the cafe and the daycare center, which we call Lot Nine B. It runs all the way from the cafe up to the daycare center. That's about three point seven acres of land. And it's under our village overlay district. It's intended to be more commercial. Now we've brought about a hundred thousand square feet of commercial to River Bridge. The hotel is a unique, uh, feature that we didn't know we would succeed in getting when we planned this project. Uh, because as to that commercial square footage, there's a six point two five percent room tax that comes to the town in addition to the real estate taxes. And between the daycare center and the gas station, uh, and the village cafe, we've brought over a hundred thousand square feet. Lot Nine B can accommodate about twenty thousand square feet of additional commercial that would probably have an all-in value of about three million dollars or maybe three million five, depending on what were to go in there. We have tried very hard to market Lot, Lot Nine B for commercial purposes. We, it's been listed with several brokers. We spent more than a year with a major restaurant initiative that would have been a seven thousand square foot restaurant. Uh, that did not work out. And in addition to the hundred thousand square feet that we bought, what's not counted in that is, is the, the gas station obviously has the gas pumps, the, the five islands. Those are a value that translate into real estate taxes. And also the, the clubhouse at the apartments is six thousand seven hundred square feet, which is a non-residential use. It's, it's devoted entirely to that residential community. But it's part of the value of the, uh, the rock well that will translate into, into taxes. So we are considering coming forward, uh, in the fall with the, with an article to build more residential at River Bridge. Uh, a different kind of residential. This would be town homes that would be for sale. Uh, we would try to, uh, peg a, a fairly, uh, affordable level in the marketplace. By that I mean the high three hundreds, which is only affordable in the sense that it's not a, uh, not a large, single-family home that would sell for more. And the site can probably accommodate between twenty-four and thirty-six townhomes. These would likely be two-bedroom. And we have a buyer who's a qualified local developer. And we put the property under contract, although it is contingent upon, uh, receiving a, a rezone at a town meeting. So it can't go forward unless the voters felt that this is a good idea. The value of that installation might be somewhere between nine and, and twelve million dollars all in. And even if you apply the residential mill rate to that, it would probably bring in more tax dollars than the, uh, the twenty thousand square feet of retail. So as I say, that's a bit dramatic. It's not that River Bridge has failed to bring commercial. Uh, we've brought more than a hundred thousand square feet, but we are having trouble, uh, finding good users either as tenants or buyers of that parcel. We don't want to see it sit unutilized. We want to bring in additional tax revenues. We want to finish the site. We have met once with the planning board and we brought with us the party that has signed that contract. His name is John Burns and his company is Black Brook Realty Corp. He's done a lot of work in Shrewsbury and, and other nearby towns. And we would like to come back at a later select board meeting with John and, uh, introduce him and have him describe to the board his concept for this final phase of development. This is obviously something that will be mainly debated in front of the planning board. And we'll be back in front of the planning board with John again on, um, October thirteenth. We'll be meeting with the Conservation Commission on the seventh of October. And we want to begin having meetings with the Finance Committee and others in town that we would like to have consider a whole set of warrant articles that, as I say, are really aimed at trying to conclude the development phase of River Bridge. Matt and I are, want to be here for a long time. We own an interest in the hotel. We want to own that for a very long time. We own the gas station and the daycare center and the cafe. Uh, but we would like to bring to a close the effort of developing this mixed-use village. We're sorry that we haven't brought more commercial to town, but we think this will be handsome. It will be two stories, which will provide a bit of a, uh, of a stepping up in height, being placed in front of the three-story buildings. And we'd like to present to the planning board as soon as it's ready, some elevations and some site plans and see if they would, uh, be open to this idea. As you know, it takes a two-thirds vote at town meeting. And if we don't get some excitement and enthusiasm from the planning board, we, we, we may not even attempt. But we would like to see if the planning board would, would endorse this as good planning and a good use of this final lot. If it happened to work and we, and we happen to get a warrant article approved that rezoned it, it would be tied to certain other amendments to our development agreement. As you know, we're obligated to pay the town one hundred thousand dollars a year for five years, uh, for public safety enhancements. Uh, if this went through, we would probably propose to the town that we accelerate those and pay the value of that five hundred thousand dollars all at once at this closing. In addition, we still have an obligation to widen the bridge over Northbrook, but there's been some discussion about maybe our demand on that bridge is much less than we expected because initially we were gonna have a twenty-five thousand square foot supermarket where the hotel is, which generates eight hundred car trips a day, whereas the, the hotel generates a hundred and fifteen. Uh, and maybe it would be more prudent rather than have us pay to widen the bridge, would be to have us pay to do a bridge replacement study, which these days, in order to compete for state funds to do a major project like replacing that bridge, uh, you need, you need to actually have a, a study done and an engineering plan put together, which can be very costly. In fact, it would likely cost as much to do a quality study to put the town in a good position to, to win some grant funds to replace Northbrook as it would to widen the deck, which we had taken on as part of our mitigation. So part of, of the warrant article set that we might come forward with would, uh, probably accelerate our mitigation payments, uh, offer an amount of money that's sufficient to do a high-quality, uh, Northbrook Bridge replacement study. Uh, and it would also address certain things at River Bridge, um, and River Run are the other parcel that we're really partners on with the town. Uh, and it would probably contain some, some other warrant articles. As you know, we've failed several times in efforts to get two drive-up windows at River Bridge, which would be very helpful to the cafe and, uh, the gas station. And we've also failed to get a full liquor license. We might sponsor warrant articles again, advanced warrant articles again on these two points. You know, the liquor license, I know that it felt bad when I revealed that town meeting that we were paid a lot of money for that license. It went up to Highland Commons and then in fact it never got utilized. All of that money that we were paid went into the waterworks, which cost us over five million dollars. In order to create a water and sewer district here in Berlin, not for anyone outside of our overlay district, but just for our district, was much more expensive than we expected. And that's where those funds went. So we think we might want to ask the voters to authorize your board to ask the state, could the town of Berlin have a third full liquor store license? And if so, it could be tied to River Bridge so that it could never be sold to, to go anywhere else. So these are the things. We, we, we've kept our main promise to the town, which you probably know was to build apartments and designate uh, twenty-one of those apartments to be leased at rates the state considers affordable and get the town credit for eighty-four apartments. And those eighty-four apartments are now listed by the state on the town subsidized housing inventory. So we, we kept a promise that now gets the town of Berlin out from under any further future forty-B projects. And forty-B is a good statute, except that developers can put affordable housing projects anywhere in your town. And so by allowing us to build the apartments in the first place, the town wanted us to get the town above the ten percent threshold that protects the town from, from these, uh, developer-determined forty-B projects. And we've done that. The town is now up at more than fifteen percent. And actually forty-one percent of the apartments are on your, are on your subsidized housing inventory. So we were able to do that. I think we've brought greater values than we expected to bring. We'd like to see the outcome of the fiscal impact analysis. As you know, the original analysis done in two thousand nine concluded that we would be fiscally neutral, but only if we built the continuing care retirement community. And if we didn't, we'd have a shortfall of fifty-one thousand two hundred dollars a year. We would be negative, a negative drain on the town. And therefore we also have the burden of an extra tax that we must pay if we don't build a senior component. However, one of the motivations for wanting to have an updated fiscal impact analysis is to redo that chart and consider all municipal costs caused by River Bridge and all fiscal benefits from River Bridge. And see, in reality, as we implemented it, did we manage to become a, uh, a fiscal positive for the town? We think it will, it will show that we are. And if we are, we may ask as part of this group of warrant articles to be relieved from that. See, we call it a senior tax, but a tax if we don't, uh, build a senior component, which we have, have found it very difficult to do. So this would be a sort of comprehensive set of warrant articles aimed at a real final chapter in the development of River Bridge. And then after that chapter, we plan to stay and be part of the town of Berlin for a long time as, uh, the owners of some property at River Bridge. So that's a quick update and a, a, a bit of an indication that we're, we'll be meeting with more boards in town. We would like to come back in front of the select board, uh, after we've met with, with other boards and begin to talk about a series of warrant articles that we might sponsor this, this fall.
Okay. Um, I don't know whether you're aware that we have talked about having a town meeting somewhere around, uh, we talked about November thirtieth and we talked about December fifth. We haven't made a final decision yet because we're having a little trouble with location, I believe. And one of the, I just have one quick question. And do you think that because of COVID, it might be a good idea to wait till some more of this passes and continue to look for, uh, commercial businesses rather than the townhomes?
Well, we, we have looked for commercial businesses for many years before COVID.
Right.
As you know, the, uh, Pure Hockey Building sat empty right around the corner for, I think, seven years. Uh, just down at the corner of Donald Lynch Boulevard, uh, large retail remains empty. Uh, we're worried about the mall. We don't know how the mall is gonna be doing in the future. And having listened to, uh, a number of real estate brokers who've had our Lot Nine B as a listing, it's very difficult. Retail has just experienced such an upside-down environment with more people ordering, uh, online and having things delivered that I just don't know if we would be able to bring. Uh, and I also don't, don't know about how long we can let Lot, Lot Nine B remain vacant. Uh, it is costly to do so. We are anxious to, to finish up the development. And I think this is very, very, uh, handsome use of the property. It would generate good tax revenues. And I think our village still is a mixed-use village, even though it doesn't have a hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet, but it does have a hundred thousand square feet. And also that hundred thousand doesn't include the small pad in front of the hotel, which would remain commercial. And we hope to get a restaurant to be interested in being right in front of the hotel. So we would have a hundred and five thousand in total of commercial, plus you've got the clubhouse and the gas islands. And, and part of our commercial is, is very good for the town with, with the room tax. So I think it would be helpful if we did the tax analysis, once we know more about the price point on these townhomes and the total number that might fit on the site. And to analyze from the town's point of view, which would bring in more tax revenue, because it might very well be that the townhomes will.
Um, Margaret, can you tell me whether, what was the, uh, fiscal impact study end date? That they, uh, thought they might be finished with the.
Or the current one, there was.
For the current one, there was no specific end date set. I know that the consultant wants to keep moving on it and gathering data, but there was no end date specified for this.
Okay. I thought maybe it was like December 31st or something, around the end of the year.
What we did speak with the planning board about is after we meet with John Burns on October 13, if we all feel that this is within the realm of possibility, we would let Roberta Cameron, the woman doing the study, the fiscal impact analysis, know about this project so that she could actually do that analysis and compare fiscal costs and fiscal revenues based on either more retail or these townhomes. So we would be referring this to her after the 13th, if the planning board appears to be open to, to this proposal.
Okay. We are running a little bit long, but I wanted to ask Scott and Peg if they had a quick question that they wanted to ask.
I have a couple of things, but I'll, I'll wait till some future stuff. I listened to the planning board stuff. I was happy to see that there were a lot. I had to wait in line to get lunch there today. So very happy that, that things are moving along. Thanks.
Okay.
And Margaret, quick question for you. So if Chris and Matt and company are meeting with planning on the 13th and conservation on the 7th, and they still need to get to finance and some other committees, what is the realm of possibility for them to have all their warrants and items together for us to have it on the town meeting, either on the 30th of November or 5th?
It goes without saying that time is very short. So I don't know actually how practical it is. And I'm just, I'm being realistic here. I don't know how practical it is to actually take the full development agreement and make modifications to that while also looking for the zoning change. So that's something that we'll definitely have to discuss. It may be that you might need to approach one before the other realistically.
Okay.
Yeah, time, time is pretty short.
Consider that.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I, I thank you for coming and I did get a chance to watch the, the planning board meeting, just as Scott did. And, oh, did you Peg? Good.
Absolutely.
Good. And so we look forward to seeing you again at another meeting.
Thank you for listening and having us in tonight. We appreciate it.
All right, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we might have to rethink when we put, put these times on here because we are running a little late. All right. So I am going to open the continued public hearing from last Monday. Is that all I need to do? And or we don't need a motion or anything, correct?
No, you just need to reconvene. Yep. As you, as you voted last week to continue.
All right. All right. And so I will call the hearing to order to be reconvened from last Monday night. We're meeting with the Board of Assessors Tax Classification Hearing. Molly, did you want to, did you want to speak to anything else?
I just wanted to let you know that we finished our public disclosure. A few properties did change. So our values have been updated with the Department of Revenue. I spoke to our rep today and everything that I have to submit has been submitted. And now we just wait to hear back from him again to have final certification of our values.
Okay.
So the, I ran new numbers for Margaret and the, the, because the values did change a little.
Molly, do you want me to show the sample tax bills then?
Sure.
Okay.
So the letter that's, Margaret, your recommendations of the September 25th, there's slight changes to those numbers?
No, these, I did it as a draft because we didn't know if there would be additional changes after the first. So this, this stands at the moment.
Okay.
Okay, there you go.
And then?
So what, what I'm recommending is right here, the 1.43?
Right. Again, as I understand the math, as explained to me, that 4% change is an increase over the average house's value from last year. So that, that if my house stayed the same, it might still go down. If my house went up more than the average, I will see an increase, I would see an increase above that 4%. And that's true on the commercial side as well, because the commercial side, they had their values go down. And so they're going to see basically a tiny, tiny increase over last year based on the average property. If their property went down more than average, it will go down. And if it went up more than, it will go up more than that, up more than average, it'll go up more than that.
That is my understanding. So for example, the single family home value last year was about 420,000. So you can see where the value on single family homes has increased, but you're right. Different types of residential properties are going to see different, different impacts on the values.
And that if we had a, a, a 0% shift, if we did no, no shift, we taxed everything sort of the same, the rate would be substantially higher, like 18 something. Yeah, yep. And so when people ask us, do the commercial properties in this town affect us at all in a positive way? The tax rate would be about $3 per thousand higher if the businesses weren't pitching in towards this shift.
Correct.
Okay, good.
I want to say that I don't think anyone who regularly complains that these businesses add nothing to the values of this town, that not only for me personally, having services in this town is a great benefit, but just from a pure tax dollar standpoint, my taxes would be about $3 per thousand more if it weren't for these businesses.
The, the rate, yes.
Yes, the rate, yes.
Yep.
Okay. Thanks. Do you have any questions?
No, I mean, it's, it's pretty well laid out here. Obviously, you know, taxes increasing is not anyone's favorite subject, but you know, as Scott pointed out, we need to, we need to not only look out for the folks that own, you know, homes and condos and such in town, but also look out for our commercial business because we don't want them leaving or truly bearing the brunt of any type of major increase.
It's a quote point. So I, I'm likely to agree at point four. I liked point four four a little bit better just because I, the business increase was, was substantially tiny, 0.2% versus 4% and trying to get sort of a little bit closer to a balance. But I'm not dying on that hill.
I also looked at the tax rate itself because I know people, I, I know folks in the past have been interested in maintaining a steady tax rate. This brought us a little bit, little bit closer to this, the current years.
I, I agree.
You know, and I mean, Molly, I like what you did. You know, what your, what you and your team did, because everyone will always, and I'm sure, you know, Chris and I and Scott, that's the first question that's asked, you know, when you're on the board, how are you going to decrease my taxes? Well, you know, we knew that one, then we'd all be gazillionaires by now, but it's a nice comparison to show how Berlin fits in with towns similar to us and around us. You know, I know people have issues with, oh, my tax rate, there's no services, you know, there's no public water, sewer, garbage pickup, et cetera. So I think as these rates are ruled out and, and you know, you give people the full picture, just don't say, hey, your taxes are increasing by X, but explain why and how and others. I think will just help to continue to increase the knowledge that our folks in town have around their tax bills.
Right.
And those really concerned can always join, join FinCom or sit in on FinCom meetings as volunteers, because that's where a lot of the stuff starts. I mean, setting the tax rate is really a math game at this point. You know, if you're really want to concerned about your, the taxes and where we spend money, that is FinCom where a lot of that starts.
Yeah. I mean, like you said earlier, I think Molly was that we're just setting the rate for residential and commercial. It's really town meeting where the money voted that raises your taxes.
You're setting the allocation of, of what residential and commercial should pay.
Right.
Right. Right. Based on the money approved, the budget approved at town meeting. So so are we, are we looking for a motion then? If there's not?
Well, there's a series of motions.
Series, yeah.
I can pull those up.
I did this mostly for myself because I always forget one of them.
Okay.
Is that in the, the board folder?
It's the last page of the presentation.
Oh, right. The last page of the presentation from, from last week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep. I'll go back to that.
I, I just filled it in with Margaret's recommendation. The residential factor would be 0.8629, which is the 1.43 conversion.
Okay. So the first one would be a motion to move that the board vote a residential factor of 0.8629, correct?
Correct. That's the motion.
I will move that.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it right behind Scott.
Okay. Any other thing, anything else to be said? Then we'll take a vote. Keith, I.
Stone, I.
Hawkins, I.
And it looks as though the next one would be I move. Whoop. Where'd it go? I move the board, I move the board vote to adopt, to not
Not adopt.
A residential exemption.
I move the board vote to not adopt a residential exemption.
Seconded.
Okay. Hearing no comments, questions, we'll take a vote. Keith, I.
Stone, I.
Hawkins, I. I was just going to get to you down. I, I move the board vote a 10% small commercial exemption.
Seconded.
Okay. Keith, I.
Stone, I.
Hawkins, I.
And Scott, you want to read it?
I, I just want to make sure I'm going to do this right. We're, we're planning on adopting an open space discount, right? Because we have done that.
Not.
Not adopting.
Okay. I move the board vote to not adopt an open space discount.
I second.
We'll take a vote. Keith, I.
Stone, I.
Hawkins, I.
Okay.
Margaret and Molly and the assessors, I, as a, as the newbie here, I found the, the presentations and this chart says, even a math person, I, I thought they were fairly well put together, easy to follow. I understood what we're doing and, and appreciate all the work you folks put into getting us to this point and getting taxes and sorry, it's getting tax bills out on time this year too.
That's right.
Just about.
Just about.
Thank you, Molly, and thank you, assessors.
One more thing, the overlay will change a little, but it's around 840 to 1 million. But once, that'll change once all the little numbers of the recap get put in.
The overlay, you, you said the overlay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just so. And eventually I'll have to have you sign something. A piece of paper.
All right. Just let us know. Let Mary know and Margaret. And if we have to actually sign it, we'll come down and sign it.
Okey dokey.
Thank you, Molly. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Beth.
Nice to see you all.
Thank you.
Molly did a great job. I just want to say that and I really appreciate it. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, Beth.
Bye.
Thank you.
Excuse me, through the chair. I didn't, I, I don't know if I caught that you closed the hearing. So if you want to.
We can do that now. Do we need a motion or can I just close the hearing?
I would take a motion. I'd just formally close it.
Yeah. Okay. Do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
And make a motion to formally close the assessor meeting. Tax classification meeting.
I second.
Hey, Keith, I.
Stone, I.
Hawkins, I.
All right. So all the
Closed. Hi Louise, hi Liz.
Hi folks. Louise is still muted. Let me change my screen. Benefits now.
Okay. So we've got the Conservation Commission members, Liz and Louise, regarding the October 17th Earth Day, Fall Roadside Cleanup.
Right.
Do you want to share with us the details of this?
Okay. So it's set for the 17th and we set the time from May 30 to 2 because we need to be at the transfer station no later than 3 o'clock to, you know, bring all this stuff that's collected. It's been posted on the face, the Conservation Facebook page, the Berlin Neighbors. I believe it's been posted on the town Facebook page and the town website.
Okay.
Good.
Okay. Um, I think I saw something about the item had been notified.
Mary, is that true?
Okay. I think Peg, were you?
Yeah, I mean.
Go ahead. Sorry, Mary.
Well, the item shared what the town put up as a save the date reminder. So the item knows about it, but it'd be good if Conservation wanted to reach out directly to Jan and I can connect you to give her a little bit of comment about why. You know, I think your, your, your spring one got forwarded a little bit by COVID and maybe you want to just get one more final push before the snow flies. So I, maybe if you guys wanted to give a couple of words to Jan, she might appreciate it.
Right. And have her post it in the calendar section of the paper.
That she did say she was going to do.
Mm hmm. Oh, okay. All right. We also need to have a flyer made up to distribute around town. Okay. So you will do that.
What? Yep. If, if, I didn't know if we were tentative still, but once I'll, I'll come up with a draft for you and Liz to take a look at. Okay?
Okay. All right. In the past, we had, we sent the flyers home with the students. I don't know if we should do that this year.
Yeah. You might have to check with the principal on that one.
Through the chair, the school district is doing newsletters electronically, I think. So you might want to check on that to see if that's a way to get the word out.
Okay. Yeah, we do have to have it approved by, by the school. So, okay. So we can take care of that. In the past, we've put up signs, but I don't know if we can get them made up this year. You know, yard signs we've put, well, the Realty Office would have a sign, a big sign in front, but I don't know that we're going to be able to do that or any. So.
You're having your distribution point at the town offices this year?
We have bags at the town offices. Okay. They're downstairs in the lobby. The box of bags is at the town offices up in the closet on the second floor. So I don't know if you see that it's empty, if somebody could fill them.
But, but on that morning, Louise, it's the meeting place is going to be in the parking lot in front of the town offices, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Which brings up the question too, do we have a rain date or do we just kind of minimize what we're doing if it's pouring rain?
Well, that's up to you.
Okay. All right. So while Liz and, you know, the Conservation Commission, the other members of the Conservation Commission can talk about it. We would be able to go inside the town offices?
I will be there. So I can certainly give you access, you know, and I could ask Chief for temporary a FOB. So when I go out with a bag, you won't be left without access to the building.
Okay. All right. See, what else do we need? Oh, okay. I think that some of the town boards have committed to helping with this. So I haven't contact, we haven't contacted any of them because we didn't know if they had already been contacted.
I don't know. We, we can facilitate that for you if you I don't know, we we can facilitate that for you if you want to give us the, you know, or if you want to contact them directly, that you're certainly welcome to do that.
Okay, all right, I'm, I think we can do that, and then we have the answer, we don't have to wait, right? Okay. In the past, like a few years ago, when the Lowe's owned the general store, they would accept vouchers from us to give ice cream to the kids. I talked to the generals, the people at the general store, they're willing to do something like coffee and some kind of snacks, they said they're not going to be ordering ice cream, so that's all. We have two or three people who said that they would make donations towards that because I understand that we can't use conservation funds.
That's correct.
Can't even use the wetland like some from the.
No. Unfortunately, the law restricts the use of.
All right. Uh, we've, Liz and I also talked about asking other, you know, like businesses to make donations. You know.
Apple cider donuts.
Okay, apple cider donuts, okay.
Cider donuts.
That's a must.
Okay, I'm looking to that. Okay. Yeah, I think, you know, like asking the general store to do something brings business to them. And we could also, you know, like publicize the businesses that did make donations. Local businesses. Okay.
I think we're gonna ask Louise if we could put it on the electronic sign.
Yes, the highway department sign. Okay. Need to ask them or does that go through the?
I can, I can facilitate that for you.
Okay.
Haven't we looked out the blinky sign somewhere?
Yeah, it's at Tohonto for.
It is, I don't know how much longer it needs to be there, that was really for the start of the school year, so let me check with Dave on that.
And but Margaret, when you check with Dave, can you also ask him to if there's any possibility to reach out to Worcester County Sheriff? And see if they can either help that weekend or maybe they could do a weekend before, a weekend after or something?
Yeah.
Because I know that he had planned on using them, but not sure where that where that left from last year.
Okay.
Do they do weekend work? Because I thought they would do weekday work.
I.
Excuse me?
I don't know, that's.
Also, you might want them as a separate time anyhow, just.
Yeah, I think that I would be more comfortable having them do it a separate time. You know, because we do have a lot of kids going around and everything and, you know, I don't think that'd be a problem, but.
We can talk with them about.
Right, we can always.
At a different time.
Right, or they could always hit the streets, you know, because there's always a couple of streets left over at the end of the day that people can't get to, so, you know, maybe we could do that. There is one thing, so Liz or Louise, I don't know how creative you are, but when the banner was put up in the center of town for Berlin recognizes its essential workers. There was an extra banner that was bought that was plain, and it was cut up into sections, so if you go into the town offices and look where. The food pantry items are, there's a box, and they're white sheets, so, you know, I don't know if, you know, people just want like to paint a sign, no town cleanup, October. No one ever really picked them up to make up their own signs for the center of town, so. I'm thinking they're there, it's kind of like free advertising, someone just needs to paint them and pop them around town.
Okay.
You know, have at it.
Okay, all right, we can look and we can talk about that at our conservation meeting.
Yeah, we have a sign from a previous year that we might just stick a note over the date.
Yep.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, we'll look into that, you know, the Holy Oaks had provided the signs in the past, so we can check with them and see what there is. All right.
And we we were saying, too, it doesn't have to be that, that'll be our kickoff day, but we can give out bags and people can put them. Out anytime, they can do cleanup later on in the week if they're busy on that Saturday, and we're going to give a number for them to call so that the town can go and pick up the the bright yellow bag.
Right, we've also set it up with the highway department and with Hudson disposal, that if they saw yellow bags out on the side of the road, they would pick them up automatically. So that, yeah, we've always had good cooperation with that.
Yep. So we'll pick up a lot of nips, a lot of beer cans, a lot of masks, we picked up gloves in April. Yeah. Maybe when you contact the item, you could let them know the reason that we're doing this, one of the reasons that we're doing this is because Berlin really likes to have.
A clean town.
Not see the trash at the side of the road.
Exactly. I do have to say that, you know, like in the past, I would pick up at least a dozen beer cans and nips just right in the little section of my front yard. And I have not seen any this year. So I don't know what's, you know, I don't know what's going on, but I'm happy to see them.
Yeah, it's.
They're all working from home.
Sorry Hill Road is a mess, because I still pick up things almost every day walking up and down Sorry Hill Road.
Yeah.
Yeah. Bob Blair does it also, so he's already signed up to do some roads in that area. And we have two people who signed up to do a section of Randall Road, so we're, you know, we're off to a good start, I think.
Yep.
Louise, have you reached out to the Lions Club or maybe the Boy Scouts in town, you know, because I know the Boy Scouts.
Not yet. To be honest, we haven't had a lot of Boy Scouts who have helped.
Okay.
Yes, you know, but, yeah, we, you know, we can ask them.
Yeah, because I know that they have to do their badges for community service, so.
Right, yeah. Who would be the person to contact for that?
I can look.
I think it's Chris Pendergast.
Oh, yeah, for Boy Scouts, yep.
Okay.
I I will connect you and Liz with Chris. I have his email, okay?
Okay, great, thank you, Mary.
Thanks. That's all for me.
All right.
Sounds like you have a plan.
Ah, we do, well, you know, the Conservation has been doing it for quite a few years, so. You know, and then the Holy Oaks have helped in the last couple of years, so it's pretty well organized.
Yeah. Well, and thanks for the, thanks for the push to do another fall one.
Oh, absolutely, and you know what, hey, the Farmer's Almanac is saying a mild winter, so who knows, maybe we'll be out in February doing it again, but. Well, you know, Earth Day should be every day, not just a special.
Well, that's true.
Special month.
Actually, you know, I do have to say there are people that go out every day, you know, they go out for a walk and they bring a bag with them and fill it up, so, you know.
So appreciate everyone, thank you.
All right.
For keeping Berlin clean.
Thank you both.
Okay.
Thanks.
Have a great night.
All right.
Bye bye.
Bye bye. And thank you all.
We shut up.
You're welcome. Thank you, Louise.
Thanks.
You're welcome, Louise.
Vote approval agenda, there we go.
All right, so the next thing on our agenda is the town administrator report.
Okay, I'm going to try to keep this concise because I know you're running behind. Today, we had Dave Smith, Tom Bradley of the Personnel Committee, and I held interviews. For the department, the Highway Department's Heavy Equipment Operator Laborer Driver Mechanic position, so more information will be coming on that. And I'll be talking with Dave as a follow up tomorrow, and so I expect to have, give the board notice of intent to appoint, I would expect in the next, within the next two weeks. COVID nineteen, last week, we submitted all of our FY twenty expenditures to the state. To administration and finance on eligible expenses for COVID nineteen. That was for, under the Coronavirus Relief Fund, now we have to simultaneously file. For FEMA reimbursement through the MEMA program, and that deadline is on October fourteenth, and that's for expenses through September fourteenth, so that's coming up. Next, and then they'll, we'll be right back on a submission of FY twenty one expenses under the Coronavirus Relief Fund, and then again for FEMA. We received our backorder disinfecting sprayers on Thursday of last week. At this point, I'm watching on the COVID trends in Massachusetts to determine the feasibility of reopening. For daily town office business transactions, not not for board and committee meetings yet, but for just regular daily transactions. Next week, I'll report to the board on that to, you know, with a determination or a recommendation as to where we go. Forty, this ties into the board's goals and objectives, I know you were gonna just briefly talk about those later. But as a follow up to the whole idea of the forty B Affordable Housing Monitoring Service, I did reach out to the Department of Housing and Community Development. And I received some good information from them on a few collaboratives that exist throughout the state. So these collaboratives actually use expert consulting, they have bench strength that can actually do this. One of the collaboratives that I found is actually right near us, it is the, now it's now called. The Assabet Regional Housing Consortium, and it's comprised of the towns of Hudson, Bolton, Boxborough, Littleton, Stowe, Harvard, Lancaster, and Devens. Hudson actually serves as the lead town in this, and this is through a, this is through the Metro West Housing Consulting Agency. So I'm rounding up information now on potential core, on potential costs. I do know that it would require the town of Berlin to establish an Affordable Housing Trust. And I also know that we would be able to pay for these services from the established Affordable Housing Trust, so I'm just beginning to scratch the surface of this. But this seems to be a. A realistic opportunity for us to begin monitoring the affordable housing in town, so I'll keep you posted on that. Chris, as you mentioned earlier, we are. We are looking at various options for location for special town meeting, I know this is going to be discussed in a little bit. I have not received a reply from Berlin Memorial School regarding a special town meeting on Saturday, December fifth, I did reach out last week. I had also reached out to Mass DPH on confirmation of the town offices and public safety building being exempt from. The governor's most recent order on indoor gatherings and allowable uses for indoor events, including legislative bodies, so. I'm going to follow up with DPH just to make sure that this building, the combination of buildings could be used if needed. I am exploring the possibility of moving my office space to the current Veteran Services Office. To enhance Mary's and my ability to communicate with each other and be able to streamline our operations. I've found that it's very, it's very challenging to be diagonally across the hall from some, you know, from us working together on a day to day basis. So I'm looking at the possibility of moving my office. I would have, I would propose that the collector's office be moved into my office. With a small counter being created in the hallway right directly across from the town clerk's office to be able to take counter transactions. And then the Veteran Services Office either being moved to the current collector's office or further up the hall. But these are low cost solutions to trying to improve our efficiencies here, so I'm looking at.
I like.
Oh, excuse me.
I was just saying, I like that, thanks.
The next thing is Village Center Strategic Planning Group. There was a working group that existed before I arrived in town. CMR PC has asked to reconvene the group to get updates on CMR PC's work on the Village Center Strategic Plan. We're going to be meeting Friday morning. This Friday morning at nine o'clock to get updates on on CMR PC's work, and I will pass those along to the select board.
About an in person meeting or a Zoom meeting?
This is a Zoom meeting. This is a Zoom meeting with with Carrie Sawa of CMR PC. Under, under grants, I don't know, I don't want to steal your thunder peg, but we learned on Friday. That the town did receive twelve thousand, twelve thousand five hundred dollar Metta grant through the Department of Energy Resources. To evaluate solar potential on the highway bar on either ground or roof mount. And it would incorporate assistance on developing a request for proposals to put solar there, so that's quite exciting, but it's not for press release yet. We were, we were asked to just keep it on the down low, everyone.
So we won't be talking about it at a public meeting tonight.
Yeah, we're talking about it at a public meeting, but we haven't sent it to the press yet, we'll, we'll try to keep it, we'll try to keep it quiet. The, we are wrapping up the MVP planning process, I have to submit an in kind match sheet. Tomorrow and a quarterly report that is due tomorrow as well. I'm going to be submitting both those things tomorrow, and just for the board's information, in kind matches. That staffing hours that have been put toward this equal about one hundred and eighty three hours to date, so we are well within, well within the. The amount of hours that we needed to contribute in kind. And then the last thing I have today is that last week we submitted an application for a little over thirty nine thousand dollars. For a pilot project on Carter Woodward and Central, I chief explained this last week. To increase bicycle and pedestrian access by modifying traffic flow on Carter and Woodward. And increasing access across Central Street to the general store and other businesses, so we have yet to hear back. On that particular grant application, but I will keep you posted on that as well.
Okay.
All I have.
Questions from the board?
Could you email out a link for that meeting, for the Village Center meeting on Friday, what doesn't seem to be listed in the public meetings on the website?
I can, um, I think that would get, make a quorum of the board present for that meeting, um, so.
I won't attend if that causes a problem that I wanted to, I just, one of my key things was making sure the center of town got some attention and some other stuff, and so, but, but it does take out of my workday, so.
Um, what we can do, although it's not a public meeting, I can ask the group if we can record it. And that's for our own, our own use, our own resource, and then we can look through that, that if that's, if that's sufficient.
I will find, give me an update when it's done, and I'll get an update next Monday.
Okay, all right. That's all I have for tonight.
Where are we at at renaming this group of people, we are to be select board instead of select men?
October, wow, is that October twenty second, I think it's October twenty second is the anticipated Attorney General's approval date. Now we know how that works, so it's, it's going to be the third week in October that we would expect to receive the Attorney General's approval. As you can see, we're already transitioning this to.
And, and when did we, a town, a town meeting in May?
June.
June.
It was June twenty second, takes them at least ninety days to go through the approval process. Yeah, so they had sent us an email saying, I think it's Ju, I think it's October twenty second, if I'm not mistaken, that they said. We could try to shoot.
They're probably hammered with everybody's town meeting happening late.
They are, yeah.
They are, but again, why does the state care what we call our group if we wanted to, I just. Seems to be a lot of work by a lot of people on something that really doesn't really matter, and, and so this is a waste of stackers, of state resources, that we, the fact that there's a town, we had to vote on it twice. Is just annoying. So the CPA, so the Community Preservation Act Committee is also in this.
Same thing, yeah.
For two years, that just because the state wants to care about who we put on these committees.
That is actually a law, the Community Preservation Committee must be established by law, so.
Yeah.
I guess the simple answer is yeah.
At some point, we might try to bring in some of our state reps to talk about things the state does that waste town and state and resources.
You know.
City, you know, and they have lawyers looking at it, they're costing a couple of hundred dollars an hour, and we have lawyers that'll look at it costing a couple hundred dollars, we had a. Just annoying.
Yeah.
That it is, the state made great progress when they did the first municipal modernization act. Now they need to start working on the next one to get rid of some of those antiquated laws and things.
The Randall Road Solar Project, we sent out invoices, too, have you heard anything back?
That is, no, they'll be receiving personal property tax bills, and which will go out with the real estate tax bills.
Okay. Any other questions, Peg?
The same in mine till the end.
Oh, boy.
Again, I break ours up, I I had mine during the town administrative report, she hits hers at the end of the meeting. Either one of us are getting filing on.
Okay, then we're going to move on to old business and. Signature on some documents. signature on some documents, the library septic construction permit and the health benefits consultant contract.
And I have a bunch of June stuff, correct?
That's.
That's new business.
That's a different motion. So, so if we, so this is the motion to allow Margaret to sign those two documents?
It's, it's Chris that'll sign.
Okay, it's a motion to allow Chris to sign those two documents. I have no problem making that motion.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Sign away, Chris, sign away. Alrighty, we gotta take a vote. This is for both documents. Keith, I, Stone Eye.
Hawkins Eye. And then when we make motions to approve things, do we just add on to it, someone to sign it, so we don't have to do motions like this all the time?
I think, I think because of the type of documents they are, I think we need a motion.
Yes, yeah, because you're signing for the town.
Right.
Yeah. Let's see.
Waving. Question, you wanted the health benefits consultant contract signed after legal review, or is that?
Yes, yes, contingent on legal review as to, legal approval as to form.
Yeah, I, I said that when I passed the motion, didn't I?
Yeah, I think I heard you. All right, so we're gonna review the proposed special town meeting articles, planning, and location. Margaret?
All right, so I touched on location issues in my TA report, so hopefully that, that brings the board up to, up to speed. There's also been a few articles that may be coming off of the warrant. The planning board discussed the other night all of their articles that hit, they had proposed for the annual town meeting. Today I actually heard back from a member of the planning board asking for the in-law apartment zoning bylaw article to be kept on. For now, anyway, that would give a total of 22 articles potentially on the warrant as it stands right now. The placeholders that are removed for the time being are funding for the master plan updates, parking enforcement, civil fingerprinting, table of principal use regulations, and amending the zoning, the zoning map. So that is.
Did we ever reach out to Dave and find out if the $80,000 that's on here is 80,000 new or 80,000?
I, I think I reached out to him. I don't have an answer. Well, I, I do know that this is $80,000 that would actually be allowed to carry and supplement Chapter 90 funding. So it's not a new $80,000 for something else. It's to allow the sum to accumulate to be able to pay for large road maintenance hot-toc projects. Is that, does that answer your question, Peg?
It does.
Okay.
Okay.
But I haven't asked him if he's okay to hold off on it yet. I will, I'll ask.
So, well, given that there's 22 of them, are we gonna try and split them up? Or are we gonna plow through in a night which you're gonna lose focus about nine o'clock? Yeah.
How much do we have say over some of these?
The board has say over every article that is placed on the warrant. Unless it's by citizen petition, and none of these are.
Right. As far as approval of putting them on the warrant, is that what you're asking?
I just, I'm sort of going through these as I read them and like, which ones do I think are really five to 10-minute perfunctory ones that really are not gonna be, and which ones are really going to like drag out the evening? And, and also just like, who's gonna like write the nitty-gritty wording on some of these? Some of them are pretty easy to write the wording of, you know, move $80,000 from, to Fund A for this purpose. You know, it's a pretty easy to write one. But then some of these are like placeholder of something really complicated. Like even the distribution of annual town reports from the select board, we have some ideas, but I don't think we're to the point where we actually have like, this is the wording we want and the bylaw change. And I think for, for me, that's one of those that I still want to keep working on. And I think even if we pass it in, let's say, you know, the first week of December, whether or not that's enough time to really change our process in place for something that's gonna be mailed three months later, and the shaking of heads is exactly where I'm going, is no. And so maybe then, so, so that could be one of those that actually waits to town, that could wait more for town meeting.
Yes, yes, there is gonna be absolutely no impact on the coming annual town report because we will not have Attorney General approval by.
Right. Oh, let's forget, the nanny state has to agree.
So Margaret, on two of them, for the air handler and the land acquisition.
Yes.
Where it says have not yet received vetted or by, you know, various committees. Do you know if Conservation and/or Dave has made his way around to all these committees?
The CONCOM and Dave have not made their way around to all of the committees. I think I, I reported, actually I reported in my TA report, but I didn't read it tonight, that CONCOM has actually submitted a capital request form. I've reviewed it and commented on it and gave it, I gave it back to CONCOM. So they could do one last review before it's submitted to Capital Improvement Planning Committee, at which time I'd also share it with the select board and FinCom. The town office's air handler replacement, I do not have the written estimate on that yet, but once that's done, we'll prepare a capital request form on that.
Hey.
I, I am feeling pressured to set a date and time and place and open warrant articles so that people can start doing these things. Cause I go back to making sure people know about it, people sure, people can get notice of it. These are 22 articles. Some of them will disappear, but new ones will show up, give people enough time to get a notice in the mail, you know, in time to do these things. And being, I, I'm worried that we don't have enough time even by December 5th to pull all of that off. FinCom only has two meetings scheduled between now and, and December 5th. Anyway, they could add more.
Scott, for your, just for your reference, with the last town meeting, with the annual town meeting, actually, both that we had proposed on the normal date and in June, I prepared a town meeting action calendar for the board so that you could actually, once you do have a date set, you can actually look to see the benchmarks, the benchmark date for certain reviews. The legal review, which I did in phases as the board reviewed articles, I would actually send them off to, for legal review so I could get them back in a timely manner. So I can do the same thing once we do have a date set for town meeting.
Okay, that sounds good to me. I am feeling like we've got a time crunch, and here it is, it's still the end of September.
Yeah, October is the end of the week, though.
Yep.
Right.
So, through the chair, I, I had initially proposed November 30th. You know, after some discussion over the last few meetings among the board members, there was talk about December 5th. I, having it on a Saturday, especially with the number of potential articles we're talking about, might actually be a very valid option. Not only that, I, I am waiting to hear back from Berlin Memorial School, but in the absence of being allowed to use Berlin Memorial School, if we were to be able to set a date now, we could have time to actually plan out logistics to have it in either location, in any location we choose. So I would be willing to, I mean, if the board wants to entertain December 5th, I'm fine with that. We can, we can.
I suspect that we're not, I suspect that we're not gonna have a problem if we wanted to have it in the fire bay, the, the fire departments.
Or in multiple.
I don't think we're gonna have a problem. I mean, if you, if you did get the Berlin Memorial School, that'd be great. If they do find that they can handle it. The other thing is that if Boylston's gonna be having a town meeting coming up soon too, possibly in the fall or the winter, where are they gonna hold it?
It's great.
Tonto's not available, or doesn't seem to be.
Only, yeah, I, I can check with Boylston to find out what they're, what they're planning.
Yeah, the Cape was still doing theirs outside, because when I was out there last week, you, all the announcements, they were still doing theirs in parking lots and other stuff. But that's, you can do that in September. I don't think you can do that in December.
Right. Who, what town was that?
It was, there was three towns on the Cape because I was listening to public radio, and they were announcing them while I was out there.
Okay.
Harvard's is this Saturday outside, and the weather gods are shining on them, so.
Yeah.
So I, I think I would give the principal of Berlin Memorial another poke, and maybe we need to just sort of plan on December 5th. Whether it be at Berlin Memorial or the fire department. I can't imagine that you're not gonna get an answer from someone as to.
Yeah, I'll, I will, I will follow up with John.
Yeah. And tell them you got your, your own sprayer. If that helps.
We have a few.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think whether it's gonna be the 30th, the 5th, or the 12th, you know, I think the 5th is the most likely of all of those. I think it is worthy of making sure that department heads or committees that are, have warrants out there are, I mean, we're not talking about, is it November or January or February? We're talking within a week or two range. That timing will be tight in getting warrants in there, but the warrant period might not be open all that long. You start thinking of the actual wording and the actual stuff. I think the planning board, you know, theirs, because it was for May town meeting, we're probably pretty close to ready, and they just need to dust them off and make sure it all still makes sense. You know, the, the CENIs for River Bridge, whether that's one or seven or 12, you know, that's, it's vague at this point. If they're, they're gonna get anything on, they need to, to get it going at a pretty rapid pace. But I'd like to start thinking that some of these are starting to like gel up already so that by, you know, three weeks from now, mid-October, we're ready to start mailing something out.
Yeah.
So it doesn't get lost with Christmas cards, because Lowe's already has 400 square, 1,000 square feet of Christmas stuff out. So apparently we're in the middle of Christmas season. I'm gonna celebrate Easter sometime next month. I've just decided.
All right, I will follow up on those.
Better get your eggs ready, Peg.
Hey, I still got gift certificates to use, so you know, we'll dress, we'll just scot up in the Easter bunny outfit and parade them around town. You got it?
All right.
So I'm thinking we're voting next week on the, on the final dates.
And I will give you the calendar then, a draft calendar.
And then if, if we really have a problem with sites, you know, look again back at the 30th and look at the 12th and see if sites suddenly happen to be better. But I think the 5th sounds like the best day to try it on.
And that's someone's very cool clock, by the way.
Yes. I, I only catch it every now and then, like, because I, I don't think I noticed the eight o'clock one going off 45 minutes ago, so.
I thought it was somebody's phone.
No, that's the, I don't know where it is at. It's this wind-up clock.
Oh, okay.
It has a story. We'll get into it someday.
Are we set with the special town meeting discussion?
Yeah, I think so.
No, gotta wait. Yep.
All right.
Well, there goes Chris.
Touch on our board goals and objectives then. Uh-oh, my frozen.
No, you're back.
For a moment, you're back.
Okay. So as I was looking at this, of course, there are a few that stick out as we agree on their, when they, or how important they are. Margaret, did you end up wanting me to go through and having you touch on whether they're your goal or not?
I actually went through myself, and all but one, all but one or two of the board's collective goals and objectives are noted on my priorities and objectives list too. The only two that aren't specifically called out on my priorities and objectives are to reorganize Highway Department responsibilities and support the Bullard House, assist Bullard House toward opening. So those were the two. I have all the others on my priorities and objectives list as well.
You have the funding or preservation of 40B affordable?
Yes, I do. Yeah, I have that as well.
Okay. Then what does, what's the board's pleasure?
I, I was looking over some of them, trying to see if I thought that there was some sort of, lack of a better term, owner on some of them.
Well, there goes Scott.
They already have a committee or team that is already working on it a little bit. Where I was going is, the 40B one was when I was most concerned about, there was high on all three of our lists that doesn't seem to have a body or team that is pushing it. Don't we have a housing advisory committee or housing team?
Partnership.
Partnership in town?
Yes. Mary, through the chair, Mary, do you have, do you know how many members remain on the housing partnership? Is it two?
I think it's, I think it's both Eloise, Linda Nelson, and Trudy Turbo.
Great, okay. I can work with them on this, but as I reported in my TA report, I, I think we've, I think we're touching on some very viable options here.
Oh, yeah, I, I think that's great, what you've talked about.
Well, and I can certainly share that with them so that we can start building consensus.
Yep.
Yeah. Tim Wheeler was a good source also. For me, anyway, when I was putting this on my list.
I'm looking, I'm looking at the TA report again, because I thought, I didn't think I saw something about 40Bs in it, but maybe I just missed it.
I didn't see anything in it, but I think I just, tonight she may have added.
She, she, she added, I definitely talked about it tonight.
She did, yeah.
Because it was on my list of things to discuss further, and you took all the thunder away by actually, you know, doing some great stuff on it. Totally fine. I'm very happy to have that sort of moving on. I, I mean, my sort of plan, because I, I'm still sort of, I don't know, the, the volume of sort of emails and things I'm trying to juggle in that brain at once. But I, I keep looking over that list and like, do I, do I think progress is being made on them? Do I, do I hear about them on a, it doesn't have to be a weekly basis, but every couple of weeks to make sure things are done. You know, my, one of my, that's not the highest of priorities, because it's also not one of the more complicated ones, is potentially adding some funding to the, the food pantry really is a budget cycle thing, you know? And so when FinCom comes and presents to us, I can raise some questions. Margaret, you, at one point, we talked about it, talked about some of both the legal challenges, things we have to think about in doing it. But I think budget process is the time to start thinking of those sort of things, and why that's not sort of something I'm talking about every week here. Some of the other things that I even were on my priorities that fell lower for the other folks, I might entertain as a side project as opposed to something, so the, like, understanding the structure of town and looking for admin sort of efficiencies is not something that was ever gonna be done in six months sort of anyway. And so I think that's a lower priority that I just sort of take on myself. I didn't see others that, that like stood out on the list as things I thought were, were, were not moving in some respects. That needed a kick from us to like, get, so now we should still monitor things, and I think things could fall, but were there others, like they needed a kick?
Well, I think all of them were started, but my concern is how to keep them going. You know, the one that, that sticks out to me that's been, you know, kicking around, Chris, since you and I have been on the board, is the whole inventory and planning for use of buildings and use of land. You know, everyone talks about it. We had a committee. Committee didn't really go anywhere. Committee was dissolved. Oh, look, it's too much later. Okay, let's bring it up. I mean, so.
Is CMRPC working with us on that? The Village Center, that's something that we're gonna have to get an update on. I would hope that they're incorporating the buildings that are in the center of town. Yes.
But not just, but just, I mean, are there other buildings, Margaret, that, you know, fall into that? I mean, so that's just my, my concern is that there might be a lot of people that are kind of involved, but there's no real plan, you know, to move any forward. I mean, some of these are going to take care of themselves, you know, like the list of grant writers. Well, that's easy peasy. There's a course coming up next month. You know, there's a bunch of us are gonna go, boom, off we go. So, you know, that one's, that one's good, you know? You know, some of the other ones, they might be in progress, but. And when, but, you know, some of the other ones, they might be in progress, but who do we lean on to say, where are we? What's your timeline? You know, what are you doing? What are the problems that you're running into? When are you going to present, et cetera?
I think probably Margaret's going to be the one who's going to be filling us in on these things.
Yeah, but again, I don't, you know, when I said it last year, I don't want Margaret to be our dump and run. You know, if there are some of these that, you know, may be on her goal list, which is awesome, but we can take back. I, I think that we should take back, you know, um, and let Margaret continue to focus on other things. Um, you know, that we, that may need more of, of her help than, oh, look at my hair. Um, that may need more of her help than, I should have wore a hat, um, than the one that we have now. So that's all. I mean, I'm, I'm concerned how spread, uh, how thin Margaret is spread in all the meetings that she attends to. And it's like, well, Margaret, can you follow up? Margaret, can you follow up? Margaret, can you follow up? Um, my, just concerned, you know? I guess I got your, uh, well-being in mind and, uh, want to shift. I mean, that's why we were elected is to help people in the town. So, um, I think that we should divvy and go.
Right. I, I, I'm just saying she's got, she, because she's there every day, she may actually be able to just fill us in on where things are every once in a while.
Yeah. I, 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 and I'm certainly not saying, oh, I, I, I can do it all, all at once. And, um, and I really do appreciate, um, the, the board's involvement with the, with these goals and objectives. Um, a while ago, and, and I wanted, I don't want to, um, deviate off topic too much, but a while ago I had actually drafted a charge for a, um, facilities. Oh gosh, I, I don't even remember what it was called, a facilities assessment, uh, committee that would be comprised of local residents who have expertise in the area of buildings and facilities, you know, maybe architectural, maybe engineering, things like that. Who could actually take on, um, a role of visiting, um, uh, the various municipal buildings uh, to determine condition and potential reuse. So I'm, I'm happy to, you know, maybe bring that back to the board to introduce it again, uh, or to introduce it. And, um, maybe talk about how we, how we approach, um, the municipal buildings issue.
Um, is this the concern over unused buildings that are just being used?
It's, it's, it's the town's inventory of buildings. Um, so, you know, you've got Legion, we've got Legion Hall. Um, to my knowledge, um, there really isn't any, um, lease agreement, um, per se. And so it's going to be imperative that the town, um, you know, continually monitor the condition of the building because there are going to be improvements, um, well, not improvements, but rehab that's needed to the buildings as they age. So things like that, we need to be able to stay on that. And frankly, um, you know, Dave does a remarkable job, um, but he's, he's stretched very thin with, with highways and trees and, and grounds and other things. So to be able to bolster his capacity, um, with another group would be great.
Could, could we just ask CMRPC if they could have that included in?
Yeah.
In the, um.
In the Village Center Plan? We can.
Oh.
Right.
I don't want to dilute the city, the Village Center Plan too much. Why? Not what I said to click on.
Well, there's the Legion Hall and there's the old highway barn. Those are buildings that we own that aren't exactly in the center of town.
Right.
Um, is there any others? I don't think so that I can think of.
Well, we have the shed over by, uh, the, the community gardens. It's not buildings per se, but we also have like the tennis and basketball carts over at, uh, the town's center. I, I'm scanning over the, uh, five-page document that came out of, I think, our accounting software, which is the list of assets the town owns.
Yep.
You know, we have buildings and stuff over by the dump. We have the hi, the new highway barn, of course. Um, I'm still trying to figure out like how to read, because there's a lot of conservation land in this thing that I don't think is in the scope that I don't think would, would peg you and, and, uh, and others and I, including I, we're talking about included, like trying to figure out what we're going to do with conservation land, because we have a conservation commission sort of for that.
No, I think I was looking at it more from, you know, buildings.
Yep.
You know, are, are they usable buildings? Can we start to maybe work and, you know, set Peter Hoffman and Economic Development Committee off to try and see if there's an opportunity to bring in small businesses to town, you know, women-owned businesses, minority-owned businesses, et cetera, et cetera. Yeah. Do we have a spot for them in town that we would make people want to come to Berlin? So that's where I was looking at is the buildings that we have, are they being properly used? Um, what can we do with them? It was kind of like the, you know, the 1870 and, and could we rent out rooms, you know, training classrooms, blah, blah, blah. And, you know, couldn't do that. So that's what I was looking at is, um, buildings.
Yeah, I'm looking at like, what, what do we sell so that it becomes someone else's white elephant? And, and we don't have to insure it and repair it and Dave has less to do or the highway superintendent has less to do and.
Right. Or what do you take down? You know, like the, the building that's over by the tennis court, uh, is that still up?
Yeah, I think so.
What's in it?
Well, it used to be the old fire truck, but I don't know now.
Yeah. So, you know, that's, that's the type of, of question. And an old fire truck is awesome, but is having an old fire truck a need or want or a must have in town, you know, type of thing? So I need, we, we need to start looking at things like that instead of, oh, that's old, hang on to it, isn't it pretty? And it sits in a barn that no one can access. What's the point?
Okay.
Um, and so I, in another week or so, will have a little bit more time on my calendar than I have right now. But give me a couple of weeks and I want to see if I can take this five-page document and actually turn it into what I think our scope is when it comes to talking about buildings. We want to understand what they're being used for. Uh, and, and I'll make it a Google Doc and, and share it out. Uh, and then people can harass me for what I've gotten wrong. Uh, but if we start like, these are the buildings that the town owns that we want to start thinking about. And, and then that will get, at least get us started. So we have the scope of what we're talking about. We're talking about our buildings. And maybe some of them we can go, oh, the answer to this is obvious. It's the, the building has fallen down. It's gone apart. Let's put into a grant. Let's use this instead of a hundred thousand dollars for improving the Tolman property, which is someone else's property. We put it into like cleaning up one of our own properties.
Okay. That sounds good.
103 Carter Street. I've got to find that. Okay. I would have fun finding some of these. I know where the Legion Hall is. Actually, I've driven by it a couple of times and, and wondered like, is that town or is it owned by someone else? And so it is on the town asset list. We bought it in 1935.
Yeah, it used to have Girl Scout meetings in there. So.
And at some point I'll sound like Barry when it's like, oh yeah, back in, uh, 42, that was, uh, because this is number stuff. Give me numbers things and we'll.
Well, let me know, uh, well, I mean.
Nine o'clock time.
You can just, um, let us know, you know, if you want to put this on an agenda or something.
Yep.
All right. Is there anything else we need to discuss?
Thanks.
Do you want this put back on?
So, so Margaret, in two weeks, so let's, let's see if I can put this together for two weeks from today. Uh, or if that's more, that's Columbus Day. So for meeting.
It'll be the 13th.
It'll be the 13th, but I should have something to present, which I think is the list of buildings we're talking about when we talk about buildings.
Okay. Um, and we can cross-check that against our, um, in, insurance, uh, our schedule, the buildings that are on our insurance coverage.
Okay.
Just make sure that they match up.
Okay. Do we want to put goals and objectives on the next agenda?
Uh, I think it's a reoccurring old business until we sort of feel like we have something done. Cause I think if we start taking it off the agenda, it falls apart pretty fast.
Agreed.
All right. Um, should we move on to new business?
Where'd the agenda go?
Okay.
Write-offs.
It, and through the chair, I know this is a, this is the accountant's request, um, for, uh, write-offs. I just want to be clear, not to confuse the board. The only thing being presented tonight to the board are the write-offs of old fire receivables, not old EMS or highway receivables. Um, even though those exist, I neglected to put them in your folder in time for tonight's meeting. So I'm going to ask the board to address those separately.
And it looks like the old fire receivables are mostly, the, the, the 90% of the money is one event right from 97 that we've done several attempts to collect.
Yep. Okay. Is there, are there any questions for Margaret or for June, um, from the board on the fire write-off?
What makes it a first, this might've been more for the fire, what makes an event that we would bill for? Cause like, if my house just catches on fire and EMS comes out and puts out the fire, we're not sending bills for those type of things, right?
Correct. Probably, it's pretty much, um, what we're looking at here is an event that happens that is out of the norm, that one of the departments, um, is able to recover some of the costs associated with the incident. So this isn't like everyday type things. This would be an oil spill. As an example for the fire department would be oil or a gas leak or something along that lines. If it was a regular property damage, it's kind of like when a tr, uh, car would roll over and hit one of the guardrails or we would have stone wall damage or, um, some youths might find it fun to go out and do donuts in the middle of the town field. Um, those are the types of things that it's an individual.
The fault of another party.
Yep.
And then, um, uh, we don't have a sort of collection agency that we turn these things over to. We don't sell our receivables to a third party for the most part.
We never have. No.
Right. There's the, I have mixed feelings, I, I, I have mixed feelings about some of those because third-party debt collectors are not necessarily the most ethical and fun stuff and many bills are, you know, going to be people in the town. So I, I have mixed feelings, but, um, yeah. Uh, I feel bad about writing off such a large amount, but I don't know any other option. It looks like a lot of effort has gone in to try to collect it. It's not like we haven't.
Uh, I can attest to the fact, I mean, not really having a solid history on any of these things. Um, uh, I did a little looking through the files, the applicable files that June, uh, kept. Uh, there were multiple attempts on all of these, multiple attempts, um, uh, to try to, um, resolve them. And, uh, and in fact, the board actually did write off a, not write off, um, did the board write off a $5,000 one a couple of years ago? If I'm not mistaken.
I was mistaken. That was in the actual property damage ones that are not in front of the board right now. But we did because it wound up being, um, a natural disaster. So we really couldn't charge or try to recoup that incident.
Um, and I did read some of the, about being that our, our collection of, of these, well, the, both the billing and the collection of receivables, because there's a bunch of different departments that bill for different things. It's not really a centralized or coordinated, something that I'm sure that we'll get better at time. Um, and that the write-off policies that I, I read that we'll probably review again at some point. I, I'd love to think of at what point is small claims court worthy of going to and where it's not. Again, I think this one, you know, with, this is years old, a lot of good attempts. Uh, but to give some better guidance of like over X dollar amount we accept, we will try to push to small claims court or, or, or when we decide to go to a third, you know, one would be the right thing to hire a third party to collect it or, or sell the receivables and when it's just not. Uh, I like some of the hardship stuff I read, but, uh, it's sort of my comments. Sorry. I've gone on.
That's okay. Thank you. Anything else, Ed?
No, I mean, Scott kind of hit what I was thinking about is that, not that I want to incur any more, uh, legal costs for the town, especially on a bill that is, well, 13 years old. Um, but you know, going forward, you know, maybe these are starting to be some policies and procedures that we do put in place because I'm thinking, you know what? If we'll just pick on national grid, because they're on the bill, um, you know, for a couple of grand. If you or I owned a couple of grand in national grid, they just shut our power off, just be sitting in the dark. So, you know, what is our, you know, legally, what can we go back and do, um, you know, for, for some of these?
You want to put in a poll? No.
Oh, come on. I got a shovel and I got a shovel in the, yeah, really. You know, and that's just kind of it. You don't want to play that game, but, um, you know, it's like enough, you know, enough. Even though we're, uh, a tiny town, you know, no, stop. So that's all I wanted to potentially look at is what have we gotten, uh, going to put in place going forward? Um, so this nonsense, and it truly is nonsense stops, you know, for these bills of, you know, 2017 to now. Come on, we have this cleared up at a town meeting where it was like, we weren't going to do this again. Well, shock, uh, we're doing it again.
Right. Well, and some of the receivables, I mean, if we're going to bill assertively, you know, that means there's going to be some bills that we just don't collect on. You know, because that means we are going after ones that might be harder to go and, and that just means more risk. I, I, I don't always think that a write-off is a necessarily a horrible thing. It, it happens in the course of business. You know, at my agency, we built, and Peggy's is some of this, you know, we build third-party insurance companies all the time. You know, you try to get to like a 96% collection rate because getting that last 4% will cost you 50 times more money than, and that's why the insurance companies play some of those games, because they know that getting that last 4% is going to cost too much money and some people will give up. But, um, I, I am fine with a motion to write off these, uh, uh, fire department receivables, uh, as listed to the board of selectmen.
Uh, unfortunately we don't have any other choice. Um, so I will second it.
Okay. And, uh, we'll take a vote. Keith, aye.
Stone aye.
Hawkins aye.
Yeah.
I want to thank June for all her work and following up on these, on these invoices. Now, i- if I could, if I could just add through the chair, um, this is a situation that does call for administrative policies on internal controls. So requiring departments that bill out for, uh, for services to, uh, to assure that copies are provided to the accountant, to the treasurer, to the TA. And then address receivables or if we don't receive, uh, payment, are they going to go to collections? Are they going to go to small claims? So this is a, this is a, a perfect example of, um, uh, of moving toward an internal controls policy. So we'll, uh, the, we'll work on that.
You have to. And I, you know, and I think that there's a, a part two where you start to have to hold the departments responsible. So let's say, uh, I don't know, I'll make up something, you know, the selectman went out and spent a thousand dollars on, uh, Peg's outfit for Christmas in Berlin. And we didn't submit the bill and, uh, you know what? When it comes time to the budget, well, guess what? You know, insert committee name here, you've got to fork over a thousand dollars from your budget somewhere, you know, to pay this. Because Berlin as a town cannot continue to write, you know, X amount of thousands of dollars off here, there and everywhere, year over year. So, uh, you know, part of that controls, Margaret, I hope is that the department heads are being held fiscally responsible for it. And if they forget to do it, we're not bailing them out anymore. Um, come up with the money, find the money. Because again, if you couldn't pay a bill at home, national grid doesn't care. The phone bill doesn't care. You've got to find money to pay the bill out of somewhere. So it's time that, again, this is not, uh, a giant wallet of money that people can just play with. This is the town's money. This is people's money. Start acting accordingly.
Okay. Just, just say that, um, this is not a normal thing. We don't normally write things off. This is our first year of actually being able to sit down and actually make up some new policies and to have some time to go over some old items that are still floating on the books. Cause like one of these is from 1997. So it's not like, um, a lot of things are being written off. I just want to stress that, that the majority of all property damage has been collected. Um, so I just want to throw that out there.
No, I, we, I think we understand June and, um, we thank you for all your hard work.
Absolutely.
And you had also made another request, did you not, June?
I did. Um, I would like to request if, um, the board so approves that they allow me to allow Amy Grenier to be able to sign in my absence as far as the actual processing of the warrants and also. Amy Grenier to be able to sign in my absence, as far as the actual processing of the warrants, and also on bill schedules or our payroll, if it should come down to that.
Okay, um, I have no problem with that. Peggy and Scott?
No.
I'm assuming Margaret is on board with this.
Yes. So June, this means no cruises for you and Amy at the same time, so, you know, we're not gonna take DocuSign on these things.
Well, that's it, unless we, we plan accordingly, and it's a week of a holiday, and then we do it on Friday, so we're all good.
All right, once you guys have the details worked out, I'm good.
Absolutely.
All right, so I need a motion.
Motion to, uh, approve the request to authorize Amy Grenier to, uh, sign all payroll and expenses and warrants as needed with the absence of, uh, June Bone.
I'll second.
Okay, um, we'll take a vote. Keith, aye.
Stone aye.
Hawkins aye.
Sounds like unanimous to me.
Thanks, Amy.
Very much.
Thank you, June.
Thanks for stopping us so late tonight, um, you know, I hated to keep you waiting, but, um, you know, these things happen.